Good evening. It is 7:00 PM. It is Tuesday, September 2nd, 2025. This is the Londonderry Town Council meeting. Everyone, please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dan, you wanted a moment?
Yes, I'd just like to ask our town manager. Over the weekend, a lot of you have gotten your assessments in the mail and you've seen your assessments go up. And I've gotten calls of people concerned about my taxes are gonna go up. So I'd just like to ask our town manager to explain that a little bit to the public as far as, does it mean because your house went up $100,000 in assessment, are your taxes gonna go up? So, Mr. Mahalan?
So there's not a direct relationship between the two. What happens is when you have a revaluation, it basically resets the baseline of the property. Some properties are gonna increase that have a different percentage of increase in valuation depending what the market price is for those. You may have a certain type of house, whether it's a split, and I don't know if this is actually true for split, that went up by 10%. Or you might have a ranch that went up by 20% because that type of property is more valuable in the marketplace. So that's gonna change that factor for each person. The tax rate obviously gets set in the fall. That'll happen probably in November this year. Because of the revales, it's delaying the process. And there are a number of factors that go into that. How many new pieces of property came online? New structures that will offset those taxes? What our revenue picture is actually going to be when we actually set the tax rate? So all that is part of the factors about whether someone's property taxes go up or not. And what you have seen, as you know, and it's not just here, in other communities as well, commercial properties have increased in value by this much. Residential properties have increased by this much because of the marketplace. So more of that burden is placed on residential property owners than it is on the commercial property owners because of the value in the marketplace. So until all of that shakes out, that entire process, we won't know what the tax is gonna be on any individual home. So just because your valuation does not necessarily mean that your property tax burden will go up. Again, it all depends on what that ratio is compared to other types of property, how much new property came online, and what our revenues are going into tax rate setting.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Next, Ms. Sherri Farrell has a presentation. Thank you.
Another meeting, oh my goodness. Good evening, everyone. Sherri Farrell, your town clerk. Just something exciting. A few residents have reached out about this. Anyone know what it is? It's on the agenda. Our Boston Post cane. And we're bringing it back. Our last recipient sadly passed on, Forrest Pratt. And a few residents have reached out asking when we were going to start taking applications for our next recipient of it. It really has a beautiful history in New England. It started back in 1909. And not all communities, but many communities in New England were awarded this opportunity and honor. So we're opening up the application process again. Chirston was extremely helpful and invaluable on making sure that we were able to get it up on the website. Residents can now, if you know a family member, a neighbor, yourself, and you'd like to submit an application, there are requirements that you'll need to meet. You can reach out to either my email, or my cellphone, or Chirston, and I will be happy to walk you through the process. This is, again, just a replica, but in the library, there's actually the original Boston Post cane that was awarded to the town of Londonderry in the names of past holders of it. So if all of you could help us to spread the word, it's something very exciting. The town council will announce the person that is our next recipient once we have that. Our deadline is October 1st, and we're hoping to have all of our applications. And then, we do know that we have a few people in town over 100. So does anyone have a question on it?
Any questions with the council chair? Thank you.
And just a little shout out to dog registrations. I know you're probably tired of hearing about it. We're still down to about 120 out of 5,500, which isn't bad. We know many of these people have moved, you know, or no longer have their dog. But if everyone could help us to spread the word so that we can get that number down to zero before we start, the next registration's again in April, we'd appreciate it. And thank you for all your support, as always.
Thank you. I will open public comment. Good evening, sir.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, Mr. Town Manager, and everyone here in the audience staying at home. Good evening. My name is Patrick Cheedham. I reside at 79 Stonehenge Road. I'm also a police officer and a captain with the Police Department. And with your town clerk, Sherri Farrell, and councillor Bouchard, I have the privilege of also serving on the Senior Resource Committee in our Senior Resource Expo, which is free to attend for vendors as well as Londonderry citizens. And we're not turning anyone away if you live in a neighboring community. But on September 4th, from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM at the high school, just again, trying to spread the word as much as possible. I'll leave a copy up here for anyone in the audience that would like to grab it. And we have over 65 vendors, I'm sorry, 55 vendors that are currently registered. And we're hoping to have more than 500 people in attendance. So it's a great event. There's a lot to share with our seniors and a lot of different services that these organizations can provide. Some at a fee, some not. But there are some financial resources for seniors as well, which is a really great thing to educate not only ourselves as town employees, but our senior population. So with that, thank you very much. And I'm gonna excuse myself to my home.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else have a comment? Good evening, sir.
Good evening. I'm Richard Belinski, 89 Hall Road. Wanted to see if we can get a definition in this town of what mutual aid is. Over the last few weeks, there's been a lot of Facebook posts about our police cruisers patrolling up at Hampton. I myself was up there on Sunday. And it was at least one of ours patrolling. I'm not against mutual aid, but to me, if they have to have people up there for full shifts, that's more than mutual aid. If we can have one of our vehicles up there for whatever the shift is, eight hours, whatever the shift is, for all that time, do we really need that vehicle in town that we're paying for? Also, I talked to a few people, going in names, and one of them brought up something I thought was kind of important. There's an incident up there. The officer gets hurt. Who's filling the shifts on our, his shift on our, you know, for our police department? Overtime, time and a half? Is this really the best use of our police department, our resources? I understand that this odd incident, a hostage, or something like that, I don't have an issue with that. But if this is full-time, full shifts, I don't think it's the right thing to be doing. You're taking away that piece of equipment. We need that piece of equipment. It's in High Hampton. It's 45 minutes away, roughly, depending on the traffic and time of year. So I witnessed myself, when I was up there, we need to have some definition and agreement on what this town's gonna consider mutual aid. I know we use it a lot on the fire department side. But again, that's not, as far as I know, not full shifts. It's something happened. So we can look into that. I just say, if that thing can sit up there for a whole eight-hour shift or whatever, do we really need that cruiser? So, and then there was another incidents with me that may not have anything to do with this, I guess, in Merrimack a few nights ago, a few mornings ago, when one of our cruisers got hit. They were over there for one of the canines for some reason. I don't know what it is. Doesn't matter. Unless that was another shift coverage thing. So that vehicle got hit, and that's gonna have to be repaired. So now you need a vehicle to replace that. Now, how many extra vehicles do we have? Two, four, six? It's hard to tell because there's always a fleet of them sitting out there not moving. So I'd like, if you can get some answers. And the other thing I was gonna bring up, Sean, you pretty much covered most of it on the assessments. Well, I got mine. It was an $88,000 increase. What are we running at? Because my assessment is fine. It's actually, I believe, a little low, probably about $20,000 to $25,000 low for the market. Even though I don't think the houses are worth what they're asking, but market drives that. And do we have any type of ratio with this new assessment between the commercial, you know, we went up 15% and commercial has only gone up 10%, or is it too early for that?
The assessor will be making a presentation at the next council meeting.
Okay, so it's too early at this point. So if we can look into the police cruiser situation, you know, I don't know if they've been in other towns also for extended periods. It's just that one's been in the Facebook and I saw it myself.
Absolutely, Richard. Thank you. Anybody else have a comment? Good evening, Christine.
Good evening, Christine Perez, 5 Wesley Drive. I think it was about a year and a half ago, then councillor Butler made a statement, a very strong statement about the growth here. One of the things I remember specifically, him bringing up with 180 units down on Gilchrist. Well, Wyndham has done a wonderful thing, and I'm gonna ask that each of you get them. Wyndham put together a Growth Management Subcommittee as part of their planning board. And they have addressed a fabulous way. I'm gonna make sure all of you get a copy because then, if we look into this, we don't have to reinvent the wheel because it does exactly. So they are putting a temporary, as of, I believe it is as of July 1st, a temporary moratorium, 12 months. And that's gonna put a moratorium on everything for 12 months. That will not affect if you wanna put a deck on your house. They have it all listed here of what it wouldn't affect. And then after that, they're putting a short-term growth management ordinance that'll be 12 to 48 months. And it will be renewed annually. And then finally, they are gonna put a permanent phase development rules together, long-term zoning changes. It's a five-year plan that ends with a permanent sustainable solution. It's all being done, the temporary moratorium, we need to get that in quick if we want it before it gets changed up in Concord. They tried last year. But it's adopted under RSA 67423, and they're able to do that. And it's on residential, commercial, industrial, and land use. Now, it applies to all subdivisions, all site plan approvals, and the entire area of municipality in Wyndham. But there are exceptions. There are exceptions. There are exceptions, for example, improvements to existing single-family homes, porches, roofs, that type of thing. Structures used to, more vessels, I don't think we have a pond to do that, but fire and police stations, municipal administration buildings. So we would still be able to get our SAU office, library, schools, educational church, blah, blah, blah. And then they go into great detail about the limited impact. It's all spelled out. Every single detail that anybody would want for this is done. And perhaps, rather than reinventing the wheel, we could look at this and do it, and do it soon rather than later. Because this just makes so much sense. So I ask for you to look at it, look over it, and really perhaps work with the planning board on doing something like this because it was brought up almost two years ago by then councillor Butler. Thank you.
Thank you, Christine. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Councillor's Dan Healy, 20 Scenic Drive in Derry. I'm here to bring to your attention, I know a few meetings ago, you changed public comment to allow profanity. And it was mentioned that Nashua allows that. So I am the Nashua City Clerk, and I wanna make clear for the record that Nashua does not allow profanity during their public comments. It's very clear, profane and/or obscene remarks are prohibited. So I have copies of our ordinance here, if you'd like to see that. I have enough copies, I believe, for everyone. If I could pass those out, but
Absolutely.
we do not allow any profanity at our meetings. I know that was stated, and it's not true. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Holly.
Thank you for coming.
Good evening. My name is Andrew Sharm. I live at 100 Chase Road. I have a couple of points I'd like to speak to tonight. First point, first point being the speed limit on my street. It's used for a cut-through from people coming from Pellham Wyndham to get over to Home Depot in the Market Basket. They fly, and I mean, speed like crazy down that road. I was getting my mail the other day, and I had one car, two, a car was coming towards South Road, and one was coming towards me. A car behind the one going to South Road passed it with an oncoming car. So what can be done to address the speed limit? Traffic signs, flashing lights, something? We have a lot of young families in our neighborhood now, and somebody will end up being hurt. A lot of people choose to let their pets run loose. I don't condone that, however, they may be the one at risk as well. The second point I'd like to see addressed tonight is, tell us about the impact fees of all this development and why it's not, in the end, aimed at helping the taxpayers? Because we're getting clobbered. I think you all know that, right? We're getting really clobbered here. So if I could have attention brought to both of those points, thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, sir.
Hello, all. John Farrell, 4 Hancock Drive. So I'd like to talk a little bit about this whole thing around taxes. So in 2009, if you were paying $9,000 in taxes, today, you're paying about $11,600 in taxes. The inflation rate during that same period of time is $3,700. So a little bit under inflation. Could have been 37, could have been 3,700, not 2,600. That's what inflation says. The other side to it is, in 2009, the burden of taxes was 58% for residential, 42% for commercial. Over the last several years, as the school populations drop and as the market and the economic impacts happen, we've watched it go to 68, 42. We've watched it move continuously, and on, and on, and on. Last time it was checked, two years ago, it was 65, 35. The most recent assessments, based on some analysis that I was able to do, is that the commercial properties went up between 0 and 2% on average. Some of the largest properties actually went down. On average, residential properties went up between 11 and 15%. And the tax assessor will get into this in more detail and everything, but that probably shifts the burden now closer to 68, 32. Got a big move here in what's happening on the side of the burden. And it's all from economic impacts. In the same scenario is, if you look at Derry, that same house that pays $11,600 is paying about $14,000 in Derry. Because their ratio is closer to Because their ratio is closer to seventy-five, twenty-five. So, all the conversations about development are important, and whether they're right or wrong for London Derry is something you're going to have to decide. But also understand the trigger points here. If you, you have to watch your revenues, and it's a balancing act. You gotta be able to look in and say, how do I balance that commercial, so that my residential burden doesn't keep going up? Because if the market doesn't change, and it doesn't have any, doesn't look like it's going to, the burden's just gonna keep shifting towards residential. Something you really gotta like, look at, something you gotta think about. But that, those are all economic impacts, it's just math, at the end of the day. Fortunately, we don't have the same problem Wyndham has, who probably has an eighty-twenty ratio, where the residential homeowners are paying a lot more, and they're carrying a lot more of the burden. So, think about that, when you're trying to figure out, what do you do with the development next? If you stop everything, and the market impact and economics don't change, residential's just gonna keep doing this. Gotta find that balancing act. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else have a public comment? Seeing that, I will close public comment.
Um, Brian, if I may, answer the question. So, to answer the question on impact fees, so impact fees wouldn't lower your taxes today. It's, if we collect anything, it has to be used on something that's a capital improvement. So, it's more like a coupon off of something you buy at a grocery store, you might save five bucks off a hundred dollars. You have to approve spending in order to use that money for something. So, the voters would have to approve and spend some more money to use some of that money. So, it's not gonna, there's nothing on the list that would knock off your taxes this year, or probably the next year. Um, if something comes up in the future, that's a capital improvement project, that we can use something like that for, it's something that can be looked into. But it isn't gonna save any money this year or today.
All right, next up, we have, we have no board appointments or reappointments tonight, and we have no public hearings. So, next up, we have new business, request by Counselor Paul regarding the potential purchase of Murray's Auto Recycling Facility. Um, Marge and Mike, did you wanna come up? Welcome.
Thank you.
I have a question, um, you've recused yourself in the past on this, are you gonna recuse yourself on this?
Well, to be honest, if you all want me to, that's fine, but there is no financial benefit for me recusing myself on this. I gain nothing from him selling this, I'm in support of it, um, I actually lose money. But if you all want me to step down, I will. That's a decision the board would have to make, I don't find it a conflict according to the ethics code, but if you do, that's fine.
I just see it consistent with past decisions, so.
Ask the board, it would be a vote. If you all think that I'm gonna make money off of this deal, which is, the ethics code says I have to profit from this. If you think I profit from this, then I will step down.
Up to you, Sean, you wanna?
Um, what does the board think? I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm just bringing it up, because it happened in the past.
Yeah. So, my issue is, even if we vote to say yes, we can't force her to, so.
Yeah.
It has to be her choice in that one.
She said if we did, and we're discussing it now, if we should. And I just thought I'd bring it up, because it was done in the past, someone might ask why we're doing it inconsistently. And I thought that that point should be raised, at least, before we continue further, that's all.
Okay. Do you have an opinion, Jan?
My, my only thing is, I think we're just getting a presentation from them to see if we're gonna move forward on this. Um, you know, and have them come back with more information with us. I, I mean, I don't see where Counselor Paul's gonna financially benefit from this, that's, that's my concern. That's my issue, that's all.
Okay, move forward. Go ahead, sorry about the interruption.
No.
Can we just, uh?
Yeah.
So, I'm, uh, I'm Mike Speltz, I'm on the Conservation Commission, we're representing the Conservation Commission. Uh, I live at eighteen Sugar Plum Lane, and, um, Marge?
Marge, we're at one eighty-nine Litchfield Road.
And Marge is the Chair of the Commission. So, uh, this briefing tonight is just to introduce why the Conservation Commission, uh, is taking a look at this. Uh, and so, uh, as Counselor Bouchard just said, uh, we're not asking for a decision tonight, other than, um, your approval to do, enter into the due diligence, to see whether this truly is a good idea. Um, so, the, you're probably all familiar with, uh, Murray's recycling area there, it's right on the, a little musc-, a little Cohas Marsh. Uh, and that's a problem. But they're, they are, uh, in the process of, uh, putting it up for sale. Um, the assessment, you can see there, is six hundred and seventy-six thousand, that's, doesn't reflect, uh, the current reassessment. And, um, and most of that is land, as you can see, only about a hundred thousand of it is, is in the building. So, they're going, uh, looking for one point four million, but that's because whoever were to buy this as a recycling center would be buying and going concern. They'd be putting in money to buy an asset that would return them money. That's not the case with us. All, what we're trying to do is mitigate risk. There is a, a threat that the, the, uh, area is posing to our water supply, and we're trying to mitigate that risk by making it impossible for it to ever be used, other than as recreation or conservation land. So, it, it's, it's been, uh, worked on a great deal by the Department of Environmental Services. Um, it, it's, it's pretty much all contamination that's from draining fluids off of junk cars, and that, that's gotten into the soil. So, a lot of work's been done, they've hauled a lot of soil out of there. They've, they've made the facility safer to operate by putting a pad underneath the area where the construction, or the destruction occurs. But, it's still a threat. Now, the, the owner has offered to remove everything on the property, so that all, yeah, because if you've seen it, you can even look at the area, let's show you in a minute, it's covered with, with cars, junk cars. He'll take all that out, get all his equipment out, and the only thing that'll be left is a pole building that actually could be of some use to the town as a recreation, uh, opportunity. Throw a couple of picnic tables there, and you, you know, have your family reunion there, or whatever. So, what we're trying to do is just reduce this threat, mitigate the threat to the little Cohas Marsh, and, and really, all the way downstream, the little Cohas itself flows into the Merrimack, and then enters in the Merrimack above the intake to the, uh, Penachuk Water Works. Next slide, please. So, this is what it looks like, the, the parcel bounds here are in, in orange, and you can see it's, uh, it's just packed with cars, uh, waiting for their turn to be crushed. The, uh, land around it is pretty much what they call mucky peat. It's, it's, you know, black gooey marshland. That's, the reason that this thing is sitting out here all by itself, you know, you get this little peninsula of land that, that's, that's out of the marsh. Why is that? It's a, it's a, goes back to the glacial history, but basically, it's a pile of sand. And so, the, the plants haven't been able to get in there and establish. It's just raised up just a little bit. Unfortunately, when rain comes down, it runs right through that sand, and into the underlying soils. So, it's just a, a disaster waiting to happen. Next slide, please. This is just trying to illustrate what we're talking about, when I mentioned the soils. So, you got this little island of sandy soils, it's surrounded by this, this wetland that's immediately connected to the water table. Next slide, please. This is a flood hazard map, so the, the, the area in blue is subject to flooding in a one-hundred-foot, uh, one-hundred-year storm event. And then the, the amber color is, I'm, I've got, I'm sorry, I got it backwards. The, the hundred-year event is, is in, in blue, and then the five-hundred-year event is in brown. In other words, more water comes down, comes up, and you can see, all those cars that are sitting out there would all be flooded in, in the, in the event of a five-hundred, a hundred-year storm. Now, we know, looking at places like North Carolina, there have had two-thousand-year storms in the last few years. So, you know, I don't really put a lot of, uh, faith in what is going to be a hundred-year or five-hundred-year storm anymore. It's going to be worse than, than, than what's been projected. The next slide, please. So, this, this is a little bit hard for you to see, but there's a, let's see if, uh, do we have that, um, the cursor thing? The, or, you know, the whole laser doo-ded, let's see if it works.
Usually it disappears in the TV, but sometimes.
Yeah. Let me see it.
It's the top one here.
Yeah, let's see if we can get it. Okay, all right, so, this line here is wandering blue line, this is the watershed. Yeah, I didn't add the sound effects, by the way. This is the watershed, uh, of the little Cohas Brook, and then it, you know, flows into the Merrimack River. So, all that land, any, any rain that falls inside that watershed, that's going into the Brook, and then ultimately into the Merrimack River. Uh, and so, this facility sits pretty much right in the middle of the watershed, and right on the mainstream of the, of the Brook. Next slide, please. Setting aside the threat, this is ideal conservation land. The coloring scheme here is that the pink is the best land in the state for hap-, wildlife habitat. The green is the, is the best land in our Secros region, the yellow is land that supports, uh, the other high-value habitat. So, the reason that the, the, the recycling facility isn't shown in pink is because it's sitting there. It's, it's developed, it's full of junk cars, but had it not been for it being developed, it would be pink as well. It sits right in the middle of this, um, area of habitat. Uh, next slide, please. And you can see that going on here, in this, in this map, green is, um, it's habitat that animals can easily move through. Red, just the opposite, and you can see along Hall Road, that's, you know, that's where the pavement, and the houses, and the roofs, and everything else is. But, but the, the, the recycling facility sits right in the middle of this beautiful wildlife corridor. Again, it's another reason that the Conservation Commission has an interest in it. Now, next slide, please. So, given, uh, the reasons that we see for, for doing this, both conservation-wise, and, and probably most importantly, risk mitigation-wise, the next steps would be to do what we're doing here tonight. Are, are you interested in us pursuing this? Trying to figure out how we could pay for it. There are some grant programs that we could investigate. This is a very odd duck in terms of conservation grants, but, you know, we could certainly explore it with some of the agencies and see if there's an interest in it. There's certainly a strong support at DES, they realize the threat that's here, and they are encouraging us to, to try to take a look at this. Uh, so, that, so, these are some of the ones we've used in the past, the one for, uh, Lithia Springs, the Mack Orchard right behind us. Um, but, you know, I'm not guaranteeing we could pursue any of those, because they have pretty specific requirements. And, and like I say, this odd duck doesn't necessarily fit into those, but they also have a lot of sympathy with what we're trying to do here. So, then, we need to work with the owner, and, and figure out how much is he really willing to take, knowing we're not gonna go into the junkyard business as a town. Exactly what is it gonna be when we do the cleanup? And probably, most importantly, what are the environmental guarantees? So, we're buying, we would be buying a piece of land that has known contamination on it. The DES programs that have cleaned up that contamination come with the land. So, any, any, um, basically, fluids that come from a car that contain things like MTBE and other ethers are gonna be covered by those, those grants, and, and they will continue to help us deal with them. In fact, um, the situation is much improved. There is still, uh, some presence of contaminants, but n- nothing near like it was when they started the cleanup. We have, uh, asked the Attorney General's Office for his advice, and, uh, they have assigned a, one of the deputy, or assistant attorneys general to, to help us, uh, go through this due diligence and figure out, you know, can we really, uh, take this risk? And I know our town manager has, has gone down this road with a, a place in Lebanon, uh, that, you know, he can, he can describe in more detail. So, uh, it's, it's not like we're, it's not our first rodeo here, at least, uh, thanks to the presence of our new town manager. So, that's what we're trying to lay out for you. Uh, if, if you have questions, you'd be glad to answer them, if you think this is worth pursuing, not to make a decision tonight, but just to say, yes, let's see if we can eliminate this risk.
This property has potential to be another jewel in our crown of conservation. You know, our, our pride and joy is the musquash, and our, I think our town is noted for having these fabulous conservation areas. This could be, uh, not only good for us, but an example to other towns of how to, to take something bad and turn it into something marvelous.
So, um, do you know who you talked to at DES?
Uh, well, a number of people, uh, the, um, I'm not gonna remember all the names, but one of them is the program manager for the, um, the oil cleanup section, and I probably haven't got the name right, but MTBE mitigation or something like that.
Okay.
And then, also, we've worked with the, sort of the action officer level, the person that's supervising the, uh, the contractor that did the work, uh, on this. And they're the ones that, you know, put me in touch with, give us all the background information on this.
Robert Bishop.
Thank you.
And then we have Joshua Harrison from the AG's office.
Right.
Um, do you know why they didn't wanna purchase this site? So, if this is an environmental cleanup, I'm just wondering, like, from a state level, why they wouldn't have interest in?
Well, that, I mean, they, the, the state doesn't really, you know, they buy land for state forests, or national park facilities, but that, this doesn't really fit any of those categories.
But I'm just, if it's, if it's a high contaminant risk, I'm just wondering why they wouldn't.
Yeah, no, they, no, they, I mean, they deal with contaminated properties all over the state, but the, the fixes, you know, not to, to buy them, but to clean them up.
And the state does own quite a bit of land around that as well, that's in, um, other easements, so Right. They've done that in the past, they would buy land.
Right, there is
They wouldn't wanna buy this piece, this land if they're already trying to clean it up.
They, they do own, they, it's often more controlled, they hold easements over a lot of the land around there. And the reason is, they were required to mitigate, um, for the impacts of the two ninety-three bridge over the Merrimack River. And so, they needed to come, they needed to provide some, um, mitigation for, for those projects, so that the, the benefit of the property that they protected kinda canceled out the, the harm that was done. And, and you might remember, they had to, uh, all actually renegotiate the actual place where they put it, because of eagles that were nesting out there. But in any event, the, they actually looked at this property as one of the properties that they could buy, because you can see, it does sit right in the middle of all this. But, when, when they, you know, saw the, uh, the contamination that was present, and this was, you know, I don't know, what, fifteen years ago, maybe, when most of that happened? Uh, that was, it was, I think, judged too great a risk.
Okay. Any other questions?
I, I guess I'm just confused upon why the state wouldn't want to buy this one. It's surrounded by other land that's owned by the state. It's been for sale for about two years. I don't know why the state doesn't want to buy it if they're already in the process of mitigating the land.
No, they.
I mean, if they don't want to buy it, why should we want to buy it?
They, they met their requirement. So they, they don't need to, they didn't need to spend any more than they, than they did.
Well, and the state also isn't really looking to acquire property. There is another property owned by the state down on South Road that we're actually trying to convince them to sign over to us because they really don't want to have to maintain it. And it's, it's in our, you know, it's attaching to our conservation land, so it would make sense that we would be able to maintain it better than the state would.
Okay. I just, it just seems strange, well, if the state's not interested in it, why should we?
Well, they were, they were interested. They, they were scared off, I think, by the contamination. And I, I'm, I'm speaking for them now, but I assume that that's what it was. Because they did do a, an appraisal on it. Uh, it could be that they didn't like the price, too. I mean, it's, if you think about it from their standpoint, they're trying to come up with mitigation for this bridge. They're only getting a very small amount of land and, and at the time it was at a high price. At the time, it was a going concern. It was a business that was, you know, had a positive cash flow, was making money for the owner.
That's just my concern, too. If the state took a look at this and they determined it too big a contaminant risk, they have more resources to take care of contaminants than we do. We have a lot of super fund sites in town and I don't know that I want to necessarily add to that. Um, so this has got me a little bit worried.
But we are, we are actually using state funds. That's where this money's coming from.
Any other questions?
And the Landery would actually benefit from having the land more than the state. We would have potential recreation picnic site, maybe even a kayak launch, um, that already has parking, which is one of the issues with a lot of our other conservation land is lack of parking to access. So it could be, like I said, another jewel in our crown.
I think it's a great location for conservation land, especially with all the wetlands around it. Um, we have, we've already lost two junkyards in town. The one on Litchfield Road, which was hills.
Yep.
That's gone. We had another one on 28, um, almost across from the Y, and that's gone. Um, you know, we've, the council in the past has dealt with a lot of complaints about this junkyard, about the cars, being able to see the cars and all this stuff. Um, my biggest concern is that, um, with all the wetlands around there, I'd like to see us probably look into this a little more, um, to try to protect the, the aquifer of our water in this town. Um, I don't know if the, and maybe town manager would be able to answer this, the utilities committee would have any input on this because, uh, I'm not a analytical guy. When I look at all these numbers, I don't know if there's somebody on the, uh, utilities committee that could, that would look at.
Mr. Speltz, he, he serves dual roles. You could ask him, he's right there.
That's right.
He's on both committees.
That's right, I forgot.
Just as Mr. Dunn.
There's a lot of, there's a lot of information there, uh, you know, I'm, I'm not into that stuff, but, um, I also look at, on the backside, you know, they're very fortunate, the people in Buckingham, they have town water there. Uh, there's other people that have wells. Um, so I don't think it's a bad thing to look into this, um, and see if we could eliminate another junkyard out of town and protect the water quality we have in our community. Um, I know we're going to be losing the other one on 28 as well, so that would leave us with zero junkyards. Bad thing in a way because it's nice to be able to have a place to bring your junk, you know, your metal, but, um, in another way, it, it also protects the, uh, the, the water in our community, the aquifer. So, um, my, my only concern is that when I was reading this, bear with me here. I had a concern on 17 Laurie Lane. All right. They have equipment in their point of entry treatment system for their water. Is that something that the town would now take on to?
No, it's, it'll be treated the same way. So that is the, when this problem arose.
Yep.
There was a, a set of wa, of monitoring wells that was put in and they're, they're still there. That's how we know what's going on there. And then all of the abutting properties, um, that were abutting this parcel were tested and they all came out okay, except for this one house on, on Laurie Lane. And that's why they put in a point of entry system for them. Um, and you know, they're, so they're, they are routinely tested, but they're, again, it's funded by the state.
Do we know if the potential contaminants on the site could affect people using it for recreational purposes?
Uh, it, the, right now, the contamination is down in the subsurface area, so, you know, it's, it's, that's not even in the mud anymore. It's down below that. It's not in the water.
There's no restrictions on persons on the property being able to know airborne contaminants that I don't have that would pose a hazard. There's no posting. There's a groundwater management permit from the state, but there's nothing of that nature.
Okay.
I think it's something that'd be worth looking into a little more. That's my opinion.
Mike, I'd just like to thank you for doing all the hard work on this. I know I've been in a few meetings trying to see if we could get any kind of exemption for us, but, uh, doesn't seem like there's any, but I, I know that this is, this is worth pursuing. This is protection of water. I mean, it's, it's my opinion, it's, it's worth looking into to protect, I mean, you explained it, protect that Merrimack, really, you know? The water falls all the way down. It would be a great area, I think, for conservation, you know, for people to use, so, um, I know Mike's done a lot of the heavy lifting here, so.
I see no harm in looking into it.
Do we need a?
Yes.
Need to do, and I'll do that.
Okay. Uh, I make, I'll make a motion that, uh, we move that the Landery Council, Town Council hereby requests the town manager work with the Conservation Commission to determine the feasibility of purchasing the property.
That's not the motion, Dan.
No?
Drop down, paragraph.
It's proposed motion.
Right. Oh.
Proposed motion.
He's got it right.
That's what I'm reading.
Yeah.
Oh, I thought he was reading that, actually. Sorry.
You're good.
All right, I'll start over again.
Sorry.
All right. I'll make a motion, remove that the Landery Town Council hereby requests the town manager work with the Conservation Commission to determine the feasibility of purchasing the property located at 53 Hall Road with funds from the Conservation Fund. Further, to determine the risk and financial liability to the town, should the Town Council decide to purchase the property, the town manager should consult with Recreation Commission and abutting property owners to determine their interests and concerns with the concept of the town purchasing this property. Additionally, the town manager shall consult with New Hampshire DES and the town's legal council to determine risk and potential liability to the town for such a purchase. Finally, we request the town manager present a report and recommendation to the Town Council. If possible, this should be in coordination with the Conservation Commission and if applicable, the Recreation Commission.
I have a motion from Dan.
Second.
Second from Deb. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes in affirmative. I just want to thank you guys for all your hard work, seriously. You really put a lot of effort, Mike, especially Mike and Marge also, into doing this and, uh, you know, I, I want to thank you for doing that. I appreciate it.
I want to thank you, there was tons of information, very, very useful information that I read through.
Thank you.
We will get to work, gentlemen.
Yes.
Lady.
Next up is discuss the approval and formation of the Department of Public Works Working Group. Mr. Wall.
I'm actually going to take care of that one.
Okay, okay.
Because I suspect it's probably not going to be that long of an agenda item. So what we're requesting here is, because I'm requesting that I, normally I could create this committee myself, but I'm asking that a council be on there and if that's the case, it needs to come before you folks.
Okay.
So I'd like to form that committee so we can start doing, uh, the appropriate research that's necessary to determine what the needs are, feasibility, and those sorts of things, and bring that back to the council at a later date, obviously, uh, as we go through our vetting process and, and review that.
Any questions from the council?
So my only question, comment is that.
Only one?
Uh, yeah, only one. Uh, so if we put this committee together, it'd be basically a year from now, we'll have something ready to present to the town.
Well, hopefully, but it may not be, depending on how the work goes and what angles, what channels it goes down and what routes it goes down to make determinations. But yes, the idea is we need to move this forward. We're on borrowed time. We have issues that the existing facility doesn't meet current standards and there are safety issues there toward the site myself and, uh, there are things that need to be done.
And are we looking at doing this right at the same location that we have now for DPW? Yes?
Certainly, that's one of the, that would be the most likely location for that, yes. Doing it right on site land we already own and trying to, other than trying to buy land someplace else, but I mean, you, you don't want to totally eliminate all your options. You want to narrow down and focus on what's more feasible, but realistically, that is probably the best location for it because we already have a facility there.
Okay, that's it. That's all I need.
Any other questions?
You want me to make a motion?
Absolutely.
All right. I'll make a motion that move that the Landery Town Council hereby directs the town manager to create a DPW Facility Working Group as detailed in Town Council Resolution 2025-18.
I have a motion from Dan.
Second.
Second from Ted. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes in affirmative. Next up, we are discussing and considering the policy of TC-102 Real Property Transactions Policy. Mr. Mahoney.
So this is a council policy and it really, we really don't have anything, we have some bits and pieces of this and other pieces of policies in other places. This is trying to pull that together, talk about how we're going to deal with the sale of properties in general and how we're going to deal with easements and things of that nature. So this outlines that process in there, how, which we would do that. You have statutes that cover some of these things, but it puts it all in one place to be able to do that. There's an important piece that I'd ask you to take a close look at, and we've talked about this before, and this is the issue of authorizing the manager to accept easements and also extinguish those easements when necessary to do that. Property, uh, the authority to, um, sell or transfer a property is with the governing body, that being the Town Council in this particular case. It is quite common that this is delegated to managers in other places, but it does not need to happen that way. This is solely your authority and your discretion if you choose to delegate that or not. Um, you don't have a whole lot of that here, so there's less of a need for that here compared to more urban areas where you have easements and things like that. And we don't, at least we don't have that yet. So that's something you need to think very carefully about if you want to do that. Uh, what we have been doing, as you know, on a case by case basis, I don't know what happened before, I really can't tell what the process was before. I haven't seen documentation of that effect. Uh, but as you know, with the, uh, the rail trail projects, I've asked for authorization to accept easements. So you could do that on a case by case basis if you wish, or, um, you could delegate that authority as you see it here, but I want you to, that's obviously something you need to pay close attention to. Questions?
I, it's me again, Sean. I knew you, I knew I was going to speak a lot, but, um, I think this.
It's not typed on?
No, I think this is a great idea because, um, in 2017, I remember there was a property that came up for sale on Hall Road and there was a tax situation. There was no policy in place or anything like that, and I questioned it because it was going to be sold to an, uh, a company. And at that time, the council changed their course of action and decided to advertise it for a sealed bid. Um, you know, there's a lot of communities out there that, you know, have a process, whether they take a sealed bid, they go to auction or whatever. I think this is a positive, um, policy to, to move forward.
Yeah, I think that this is a great policy for us to move forward with. I'm surprised we, we didn't already have one in place.
Yep.
You know, and having, uh, someone like Sean who's had a lot of experience with this, um, putting this in place will be great moving forward.
Any other questions?
Yep. I'll move that the Landery Town Council hereby adopts policy TC-102 Real Property Transactions effective upon the passage.
Second.
Motion from Ted, second from Sean. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes in affirmative. Next up, discuss and set a public hearing on ordinance to repeal title of the municipal code, establish chapters as standalone policies. It's the first reading.
Thank you very much. So as you know, one of the priorities that the town manager has expressed is going through the municipal code and the charter, doing some recodification and making sure all the policies are in the appropriate places. And in reviewing Title VI of the municipal code, most of the contents of that particular title are actually policies that govern, um, the management of property and staff, which falls under the auspices of policy and not municipal code, which ordnance, which is another way of saying ordinance, which is governs, binds the town as a whole. So codes will usually apply to the public. So as we're going through and doing the recodification and trying to figure out what our new taxonomy will be, it makes sense to pull out the things that don't actually belong in the municipal code and instead start instituting them as policies. Um, as we do this, we're going to end up reviewing all of the policies as well, making sure they're up to date, as you've seen that, uh, Mr. Mahoney has done to this point in time. But if you look at the grid that I created here, I went through all the chapters in the town policy, in Title VI, and indicated whether they would be reconstituted as an administrative policy, a council policy, a, whether they would remain, there's two things in here which will actually remain part of the municipal code, um, but will be transferred to different titles. And then there's one that's just so out of date that it's incredibly obsolete and it doesn't apply anymore, and we're just getting rid of that one. So what we're in front of you asking today is that you advance this and we're asking that you schedule this for a public hearing on September 15th so we can move ahead with this.
Any questions?
I, I just have one.
Go ahead.
Um, when you're going through these and updating the policies.
Mm-hmm.
Will all of that be coming through us? Like, will we be getting a presentation on a lot of these as to what's being changed, what we're, you know, and just in case there's some input, because I'd like, I personally would like to talk about our welfare standards and policies. I think that could be improved greatly. Um, so I guess that's why I'm asking.
So definitely anything that has TC in front of it will go before the council and I'm going to turn this over to Sean.
Yeah, you just have to be careful. Some of these are administrative in nature and some, some are administrative in nature, which are the manager would put into place, and some are council. Clearly, welfare guidelines is something the council has to approve.
Okay. I just was curious.
No, it's, it's a good question because we have a mix and match of things that don't necessarily go where they're supposed to go, and we're trying to fix that, and this is part of that.
No, and I think that's incredible. I just, I wanted to see if we were going to have any input into how this was going to look in the end.
So admin codes are codes that, admin, uh, policies are policies that I put into place, and as you know, you see all of those, they get sent to you. And when I get feedback, I haven't had a whole lot because they're really administrative in nature, they're not council, uh, level. But some of them are clearly council needs to be acting on, um, and that she's outlined them as we indicated in there.
No, she, you did a great job. Thank you.
You're welcome. And I will say, um, Councilor Paul, to that particular point, the current welfare standards chapter is only our contract with CHS. So when that has to be done, you know, the council approved welfare, the welfare levels last year, um, that's one of those chapters that will be significantly overhauled.
Yeah, I, I just, and I guess with that, we use an outside agency. Would that be re-looked at, reevaluated? Because we used to have a mediator in Town Hall and then we went to the outside agency. I was just wondering.
Yeah, and that's something beyond the scope of what I'm doing right now, and that's certainly something that you could bring up then, but at this point.
But to your point, though, it shows here that we're making it as an admin policy. I can't do that, you have to do that.
Okay.
So that, it's not going to be ADM 970, it has to be TC because you have to set the welfare guidelines. I cannot do that. I cannot do that.
Okay.
That's by statute.
Okay. And for a later date.
Yep. The 900 indicates that it's a temporary policy and it will be revised.
All right, thank you.
But just on that point, they have to be updated when the conditions change. If rents keep going up at a certain rate, you have to update those so they're fair, otherwise you're going to get a legal challenge to them. So sometimes it can be less than a couple of years, it could be every year depending upon what the market is.
Right, but my biggest concern is how we handle things for people here.
Oh, yeah.
I'm, I'm not convinced that that company is doing, what we pay and what we get is really a good, so I'm, I'm thinking that's, in the future, that's something we should look at.
Any other questions? So if we could just schedule a public hearing on the 15th, that would be great.
All right. Next up is discussion of a request from Councilor Paul regarding solicitation of a new law firm. Councilor Paul.
Thank you. I brought this up because it's been brought up to me a few times by different people, but it's good business to always evaluate our vendors and who we're using, and are they fulfilling what we want in a timely fashion? Are they affordable? What are we getting from them? It's good to evaluate it and to look what's out there. I'm not saying we're going to change, we may not change, but it's a good policy. Even most businesses will look at, you know, if they have accountants every couple of years, maybe get a new one, or, you know, just go out there and see if they're getting the best price for the best goods. And I think that's important. I mean, do we need a ginormous law firm, or do we need something small like the school has? The school has Gordon Graham, it's just a small firm. Do we, you know, I don't know. We don't know this till we start entering into examining what we're looking for. Will a smaller firm react quicker? Will a different firm, you know, be able to get responses quicker? Well, something I heard a lot in planning was, it took a long time for the, for the legal to get back to them, which drags things out, which causes other issues in and of itself. So it's being put out there because residents have asked me to. I think it's good business policy, good government, to look at what we're doing, why we're doing it, and who we're using. It may not change and it may change, I have no idea. That was my intent for putting this on here.
Any question in the council?
So I do agree that it is good to look at vendors every now and again, make sure you're getting the best deal. The only concern I have, and I'd just like to propose that we change the motion, I'd just like a lighter touch to this than, than going full down the road of creating a new process and doing this. I'd just like to us to direct to Tom Andrew to kind of just take a look out there and come back to us with some information on what some of the available options and costs are, instead of just creating a full process of everything else. Because we may see that all the options aren't, aren't worth going down the full RFQ process. So I think it's, it's good to take a look at this, I just don't want a heavy touch on it, I want a lighter. And, and if he comes back and it looks like there is some law firms that, hey, there might be something here, then we can full go the rest of the way down the road.
Okay.
And I will say, our law firm that we are currently with has been able to provide us a very good service for the time that we've had them, and what's beneficial is that they have lawyers that specialize in various different departments or different subjects. So it's not like having an attorney that, you know, we only use for one thing, but then, oh, all of a sudden we have something that may come up on water or something else with the state, or something else that, land use wise. And having a law firm that has different specialties that their attorneys can focus on, we can pull from them when we need to.
No, I agree. Like I said, I don't know what the result will be, but if you don't look, you don't know, and it keeps them on their toes too, in what they're offering us.
And maybe we get a better price.
Exactly. Or some sort of service that they didn't offer before, that they'll offer for free or something.
So I don't know how to precisely word this motion since it's not written out, but more or less, I'm going to move that the council directs the town manager to just come back with us with some potential options as far as what we could look at for law firms and what the cost would be on that, and then we can review further as a council.
I have a motion from Sean.
I'll second it.
A second from Deb. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes in affirmative. Next up, discuss request by Councilor Paul regarding the creation of legislative policy positions by the town council relative to proposed legislation before the New Hampshire State Legislature. Ms. Paul.
Um, this really came about in lieu of everything that had been going on up in Concord, and I think it's good for us to be proactive, not reactive. We should know what's going on, we should, not always, but we should think about taking stands on certain things if it benefits our town. I mean, that's kind of our job. I know we have state reps that do it, but we should also have the ability to do it if the planning board or the town council wanted to take a stand on a bill that was out there and maybe have the town manager represent us up in Concord and speak on our behalf as a community, how we feel about something. I think that's important. It's important to have the Londonderry residents' voices heard as much as possible. Whether I agree with their voice or not, I think that it's important because we all have a different background and we all have a different perspective, and that's, that's great. That's what makes a good board. And I think, you know, if we, we discuss it, oh, this is up in Concord, this is going to help Londonderry, and you know, we do it publicly and we're for, or, you know, we're not, we don't do anything, we don't do anything. But if it's something we all agree on, then maybe that's something to give another voice up in Concord, because then they'll understand that it's a large group of people that feel this way, not just one.
So just a quick question. So are we looking at doing individual, Deb?
I'm sorry?
Individual, individual.
Bills?
Individual bills, like if they come before us?
I, I, to be honest, I'm not sure yet.
Okay.
And that's what this is all about, is to try to put together something to say, how, how are we going to address this? Is it going to be addressed like this? If there's something that, you know, we ask you or, or, you know, another rep to go to Concord for us to change something, a resident says, Ron, I want you to go up there and get rid of the plastic packaging.
Yeah.
I want you to put this bill forward, and we present it, and the community feels, or the board feels, that's a good idea. We're all for that, considering we have so much PFA's, we're happy to do that. And that helps move something forward, that's good. It may not work that way, but it also keeps the community and the boards abreast of what's going on up there and how it will affect us. We may not do nothing. We, we could sit there and say, there's nothing we're going to really stand behind, but there could be something, and that I don't know.
Okay. So I don't like this because I think it muddies the waters in between us and Concord. I think we've got our own responsibilities to take care of. I think we have eight reps that are very available in this community that we can, we can take care of. So we're, we're wasting time, we're supposed to be legislating for the town, trying to legislate up in Concord. I know that, at least I can only speak for myself and Ron, are very aware of what's going up on in Concord and are involved in things, and we know how to, to move things forward if we want to push forward for something or not push forward for something. I just, taking an official stand as a council, I feel it's not our body, and we have representatives in town to take care of that for us. So it's, it's just outside of our purview.
So do you not think that someone like a town manager going up and speaking against, I'll just use those zoning bills that were up because that was a hot topic, and other towns had their town managers or administrators step forward with letters from their boards saying this is how they felt? You don't think that that has even more power than even Ron speaking? If there's something maybe with the police that's going on that could affect us, it doesn't have, it has even more of a bite when our town manager goes and says, listen, this town, this large town is, is for this or is against this. I mean, I, I.
Your, your contract is public, correct?
It is.
Isn't there a provision in there where we cannot ask you to lobby for things, if I remember?
Well, no, you, you can do that.
Okay.
But as long as I'm doing it for you.
Gotcha. I, I knew there was something in there about that.
Yeah, I have a code of ethics that says.
Gotcha.
I have a code of ethics that says that I'm here, I serve the community.
Okay.
So if I'm going to go up there to testify, it's because I've been asked to by you.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure.
Otherwise, I have no business being up there. That's how I view it.
Okay.
So, so have you done this before up in Lebanon? If maybe you can elaborate, I mean.
They, they have policy positions, so I would testify on any bills that are related to those particular policy positions. They have some that they've chose not to take action on, they think are relevant to their business. There are some that they, they oppose NHMA's policy positions and some that they support. So they, you know, they asked me to testify on those bills when those come up.
Can I ask your own opinion? Do you feel that your testimony has some sort of validity when you go to Concord and speak? It's a different perspective.
Well, I guess half the time the bills that I testify on don't go anywhere, so I don't know about that. How much they listen to that, or, you know, I, I really can't answer that. I mean.
Well, I was just thinking that their perspective on it, you know.
When I would go to testify, testify from a technical point of view. This is the, here's the information that I have. My community advocates for this, and I would have a written document, and I hand that in, that testimony. So I guess it all depends on who's listening and how much weight they give that and.
In the end of the day, we're, we're interfering with another body, which we have representatives here that can take care of that. It's, it's the same thing where I, I just, citizens can do that on their own. We even as counselors can go do that on our own and testify on bills, and, you know, I have, I know Ron has too as well. So we, we have the ability to do that. We don't need to officially take up time in this body to discuss issues that are Concord issues.
And that's not what we're doing. We're just putting a policy in place in case something comes up that's important, and this is the policy, this is the procedure, this is the way we handle and address something like this. I'm not saying it's going to happen every week. I mean, Ron, you, you're up at Concord a lot. I never go, so I have no idea. I work, I can't go. When someone gets up and speaks from a town about something, does that pull a little bit more weight than just a citizen coming up and speaking?
So I'll give you, I'll give you a real life example. In the last five years, I think once in Londonderry, Mike and I went up to Londonderry, I went up to Concord, represent Londonderry for the, for the bill that went through to have our sewage go to dairy. And it had to be a state law to do that. So I think it would have to be a specific example where it would benefit the entire town. Like, it couldn't be something that's controversial, you know, like, I would think, as I understand what Sean's saying is, we don't want to have a, pick a policy position where half the town is for and half's against, and then we go there and testify one way or the other. Then we're alienating our residents. But I think something where the entire body, like that, I can only think of one time in the last five years that we had something like that, but that is an example where we went up there and we testified in favor of this for the town to benefit the entire town. It was going to benefit every person in town.
Right.
And we didn't need a policy to do that. Those situations that always come up, we can always take care of those and still do those kind of things, and that, that makes sense to do.
That's the best way I can answer your question, I think. It's just, it, it does have impact if it's for the entire town, but I think we have to be careful if, if we get partisan.
No, and I'm not looking to get partisan. I'm looking to protect the interest of people in this town and to give us a stronger, you know, po, voice up there really is what I'm looking to do.
Why wouldn't you do it through the representatives, I guess?
Do you want me to say that right here, right now?
Go for it, please.
They're never available. There's two, that's it. You never see any of them come, they're invited to things, they never show up.
I have no problem accessing them, and I've seen other people have.
Well, you're lucky, you're in that clique, I'm not. I have a terrible time reaching them, and I'm a, I'm a newspaper and they still don't reach out that way.
I've referred to other people to them, and they've, they've gotten back to them in a, in a very succinct amount of time.
Would it be, would it be reasonable that if we left it at this step, that if you felt like there was a policy in Concord that would affect Londonderry's entire population, that we'd bring it before the council?
But I'm not paying attention.
I am, but I'm saying.
But what happens when, just say you don't get reelected next March, then what? Who's going to be watching?
Well, who would bring this up then?
I don't plan on going away either way, so.
But I'm just saying, who would be?
I would be.
And what if you're not, are you running for?
But I mean, but if, if nobody knows about it, nobody's going to bring it up here anyway. So I mean, if no one.
And that's the, that's the problem. I'm hoping that the town manager would be able to watch these things for us and say, this is, are coming up, this is an important bill for Londonderry. Our policy says, I'm going to address the council and tell them that this is going on and that we should take a stand one way or another because this has a big thing. It may only happen once every five years, but it's something that I think is important for us to protect our town. But that's it.
I just, I just want to say that I think sometimes Concord will mandate us to do certain things where it affects our budget. And I think, I think that, that's something, to me, that we should have the town manager going up there and speaking and saying, well, if you pass this, this is going to impact our budget by X amount of dollars, and, you know, for a community, you know, it's going to hurt us, whatever.
I think that gets troublesome because the, the reps up in Concord generally think about how things affect the whole state. I don't want him to have to try to figure out how it affects the whole southern New Hampshire region. And when you're focused too zeroed in on solely if it benefits Londonderry but hurts Litchfield, Wyndham, Dairy, and Manchester, then we should just do it and be like, it, it puts us at odds in, in legislation we're not familiar with. The reps up there are familiar with it, they work in it, they go through committees, they hear committee hearings. We don't hear that. We're not sitting through committee hearings. Well, I mean, Ron is, I watch a ton of them, but we're not seeing that entire body of work. So for us to make a decision on something that they go through hours of reviewing, looking through, and going over, listening to testimony at the well, which we're not listening to, it'd be the same thing as if, if they offered us our opinion without watching our meetings at all or telling us anything. It's just not an educated guess. It's a different governmental body for a reason.
Well, can we take this up, you know, case by case?
That's what I was trying to say. Is that, can we do, that's what I was trying to say, is can we do it case by case?
What is the, what is the steps to do that?
But we, that's what we currently do.
So do we, do we as a council or as citizens, how do they do that?
So I would, I would say that they would submit. So I would think that if a citizen had a request like that, they would submit the form. One of us would sponsor it.
There's nothing formally.
It would come before. We have that form that town manager created.
That's to be put on the agenda.
Right. But that's what you want, right? You want it on the agenda, so you can talk about it, right? No?
So I don't think we need anything formal. We have, and we have addressed townwide issues today.
I'm asking, right? What's that, it would be on the agenda?
I know, but how much time in between? These things happen relative, by the time you find out about it, then you get it put on the agenda, then you have the meeting, the vote could have already happened up in Concord, and you missed your window.
They could speak at public comment.
I guess.
And they have. I mean, this, this has happened.
It's fine.
Mr. Chair.
No, yeah, please, Ted.
Does the New Hampshire Municipal Association come before any of the boards that you're on to speak on any of these issues that they support or don't support in any way?
They do.
And do the reps themselves take it into accounts, or do they just brush it aside?
No, they, they do take it into account, municipal association.
And, Mr. Town Manager, we belong to the New Hampshire Municipal Association, correct?
We do.
So in a way, by us belonging to them, we're already going along with their policy decisions that they're putting forth. So I don't know why we need to then also have our own policies that we want to support or not support if we're already part of the New Hampshire Municipal Association, which in a way, we're supporting the policies that they're trying to push forward.
Yeah, this just seems unnecessary.
I, I'm fine with it on a case by case basis though, Dan, with Dan, right? I mean.
I mean, I think that if.
This is not public comment.
Absolutely.
I, I think that if the town manager saw something or planning board saw something and brought it to our attention,
Which they can do today.
then we could address it at that time and say, let's see what we can do.
But I don't think any of our boards and committees know that they can do that.
Well, I think we need to just get the word out to them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
To do that.
I don't think they know that.
I think sometimes when there's 4,000 bills that come across the state house, it's very hard to actually follow upon what's happening or when's happening. But certainly there's way too many bills and our state news doesn't really cover any of them. And I think the New Hampshire Municipal Association emails out pretty well to our town manager if there's something concerning that we should be speaking upon. And so if it does, and I, I think he's brought it to our attentions in the past, that something may or may not come up. I think we can go off of that.
Yeah.
And he's here to advise us when there's some that may come up.
I think that's great. I just, I heard from somebody on the planning board that they wanted to do something and they didn't know how to do that, which then brought this whole thing up. And so, um, I'm just want, maybe it's just that the boards have to be educated on the process of if they have something that's, they want to address that's going on in Concord. What is our policy, back to our policy of doing that, that they may not know because there's nothing written and those boards change constantly. At least when there's somebody new, they're going to get a thing that says if this is this, this is what you do. If this, you know, just like.
I mean, anyone's welcome to come to public comment and bring up to a public comment for us to address it.
I, I understand, but that's not necessarily true in planning board or a planning department because there's no public comment.
I think this is so rare of an occurrence. This is so rare of an occurrence. I don't think we necessarily need policy and I think it's blatantly obvious when we do need to address something like the, the thing with Mike in the water. That was completely obvious. So I don't, I don't think this is necessary.
I think we just ask the town manager just to put it out there to other boards that if they have an issue or something like that, to please bring it to his attention. He can bring it to our attention and we can do it case by case.
And I also think this is a good opportunity to direct people to our state reps and give them opportunities. I think sometimes people just say they're not available and they feel that way, but they don't try or they don't interact or they heard somebody else. I think they've been very available in the past and if they're not, I'd like to hear about it and I can help address that with them and help them bridge that gap. Because they've been very available to everyone I've sent to.
I disagree. So I've had a different experience.
So, so we'll just have the town manager bring it to our attention. Deb, is that?
I'm sorry?
The town manager will bring it to our attention if he sees anything he thinks is relevant.
There needs to just, some sort of verbal thing that says, this is how you got to do this.
Does that work for you, Mr. Town Manager?
So what I can do is I can send you out the NHMA legislative bulletins that come out on a regular basis. But I, I will tell you, and then Councilor Paul brought it up, things happen exceptionally quickly up there. And in between meetings will probably not be time to be all direct, react, especially as the process goes along and you folks are aware of that in terms of the process. And then there'll be information that there's going to be amendment to that. You might find that out the night before. That could dramatically change what a bill is. So you just have to kind of keep that in mind. And that, so you have basically no time to react to those. So just have to consider those.
That's another point too, why I don't think us as a body needs to be diving into these waters. Cause we could have you go up there, say, in this meeting, hey, go lobby there on Wednesday. They make an amendment Tuesday night and all of a sudden it's a total different bill. We have you lobby for something that ends up against the town interests. And that, things have dramatically changed where the, a bill, something I've supported turned into something I have totally not supported in, in an amendment.
That, that's precisely why the legis-, this is not, this is really an issue for you and it's not for me. It's not the administration. That's exactly why you have legislative policy positions. So when they do change that, well, this is our position. Now you cha-, you dramatically change that bill. We are now opposed to that bill and we're actively going to testify against it. But again, this is nothing to do with administration. This is solely public policy, which is your role.
I think I'm fine with a case by case basis, like Dan suggested.
Well, I mean, I'm kind of concerned when he said that things can change quickly and how to reach us. But I think if he reaches us out by email maybe and say.
Well, I think the problem is we don't have an administrative staff that can just go at becking call to go up to Concord. I mean, you know, our town manager and our town staff are very busy on the day to day basis here.
I can tell you right now that things can change in the moment. We can agree as a body that we're going to make an amendment and it could change the whole bill right there in that exact moment. And there's zero time to notify anybody. So, I mean, there's, there's times where we'll, we'll all agree and we'll make an amendment, we'll take a recess, we'll go process the amendment, bring it back and it happens in the, like in less than an hour.
And this is why we've got to rely on our delegation because it is too much of a judgment call and I don't want us trying to make it one step removed from a body that's not our body.
And I think to really make this a real actionable item, we'd actually have to hire staff that are lobbyists for the town to be at Concord. And I don't think that's reasonable for us.
And we have eight state reps that can take care of this.
So we do a case by case. That's what we're saying. Case by case. You good with that, Deb?
I'm good with that.
All right. Next up, uh, discuss the request by Councilor Paul regarding the coordination of a joint meeting from the town council, school board and budget committee. Ms. Paul.
Okay. Um, back in the day, this is something that we did, uh, a couple of times a year. Um, we had a meeting of, um, the major governing bodies and we looked about ways to find synergies, ways that we can better work together, ways to get things done. And so I just thought it would be nice to bring this policy back. You know, it's something that the school's doing that we think is great. We might be able to incorporate. They're looking at something we're doing. To think that everybody's watching everything is, is absurd. And the budget committee really should know the mindset of the councils and the boards a little better in a, in a, in a more informal kind of discussions, back and forth, that sort of thing. Dan, probably, you're probably the only other one, maybe Ted, that remembers those. They used to be in the band room in the high school.
Yep.
It was back with Tom Dolan, Mark Oswald, Marty Bovey, trying to remember who was on council at the time. But that's how it, we used to just talk about things. How can we find ways to save money, to do things better? And that's why I wanted to bring it back.
Just a couple of questions I have is who in the past, who organized the meeting? Like who set up the agenda? Who, who ran the meeting? Like how, how did that whole structure work? Did you have anything in mind?
Yeah, I do.
Yeah.
It was coordinated by the superintendent and the town manager to find out the day. They usually did it on Saturday. The public was invited. The, they would be, an agenda was set by the chairs of the boards and topics they would like to talk about. So if, for example, um, the council, I say, I felt, Ron, we should look and maybe we can talk to the school about how we can do more IT stuff together. More cybersecurity together, more whatever, to make it more cost affordable, more effective, more efficient. May not go anywhere, may go somewhere. I don't know. And I could say that would be on the agenda. Uh, Dan might say, I want to look at, um, paper. You know, buying of paper and office supplies and cleaning. We have our cleaners, they have their cleaners. If we had one cleaner, it might be better. Just things like that and people were, and then it gets put on the agenda and they talk about subjects. It's not a meeting that happens a lot. It happens like two, maybe three times a year. And you just try to find ways to better coordinate, um, different things and try to save some money. I know it's pennies on the dollar, but you know, and, and it's just good to be able to know our other people that are working and it's very informal, like I said. And the residents were able to ask all of us questions at the same time. Like how is it that the school board can have, um, representatives in on contract meetings with the unions and the town council can't? Well, we have a charter. The charter says we can't and it's according to this RSA for the town, but the school isn't governed that way, so they can't. So instead of people having misinformation or creating ideas, it's all put out there and it's all ironed out nice and clean. And, uh, I think it's a lot of goodwill.
So I, I guess I'm confused on what the ask is here. So we can do this today if we, you know, if we had something to, to meet with Bob Slater about the budget. We, we definitely could have a joint meeting if we wanted to coordinate with that. There's, there's nothing we can't do already. Um, are, are you saying we should just have a meeting just cause or are you like, cause if we have a reason, I see, yeah, this has value.
I don't know if there's a reason yet, Sean. It's the catch 22. I don't know until we decide that it's something we'd like to do and then everybody can put in input. I mean, right now, the, I don't know if the school would want to meet with us. I don't know if the budget committee would want to meet with us. I don't know if the budget committee would want to meet with the school or just the school. I have no idea. And I have no idea what the topics of conversation are. I'm just saying it's a little nostalgic. It's something we used to do. It creates goodwill in the community. It puts us out there. Yeah, it's an extra meeting we have to go to. Yes, we have to deal with people talking to us, but you know what? That's what we signed on for. I think it creates a lot of dialogue and it creates a lot of ideas.
Good, Dan. So just to give you a little history, Sean, um, this was done in the past and it was very beneficial for the town. I remember when the town used to plow the school parking lots. That's right. We used to plow all the parking lots. The town, the school would provide cleaning service at the library. The school would plow the town hall, you know, recently. I mean, not recently, but, uh, when they had their building over here. They would plow this whole place. They would take care of the walkways. It's just, we did their trash and then we, we didn't do their trash. And, um, so things like that that worked out.
So that came to a head, I think, when I first got elected in 2017 and there was a lot of discussion about, mixing of expenses and who's actually responsible for what. And it came to a head between different board members from the school side and the town side who didn't really like the mixing of items and it wasn't very clear with a lot of different items, who was actually responsible financially for what. And I think at that time we decided to, you know, cut it more cleanly. I think Justin can go over that a bit more with us at some point, but I think there's a lot more that's been cut off from what we provide to the town and what the school provides to us. Because I think there was a lot of mixing that was going on that became really fuzzy with the numbers.
So I got a question for Dave that's in the audience.
Does, do you want to ask Dave a question?
Yeah, could I ask Dave a question?
Dave, would you mind answering a question?
So the school district, when they sand and salt, do they get that from DPD? Do we charge them for it?
We track it. Um, but where the finances are in it, no, I do not believe so.
Okay.
But I, that's a question for Justin.
Right. But that's just an example of us working with them because we can get it in bulk. We can get it at a better price. So that's just an example. That's all.
If there's a transfer of funds from the school district back to us for that services, I, I don't believe so, but that's really a finance question.
Okay.
So Deb, I would be willing to reach out to Bob and Joseph and see what they would have for input on this and see what they would want to move forward and bring that back to the council if that's something that would be acceptable.
I think that would be good.
Yeah, that's good.
Yeah, reach out to them.
Get their opinion and see what they think.
Yep. Yeah. I think that's a good idea.
Is that fair?
It is fair. Thank you.
I think it's a good idea, especially since we're trying to work with them on the SAU building.
Yeah, I, I think it's good. I just, I like agendas. I like not meetings for the sake of meetings. I like to have a, a reason we're doing stuff, a reason we're discussing, something we're trying to achieve.
I will bring it back. Ron, do you want to reach out to Bob sometime the school board that he is on?
Absolutely. Yeah, absolutely. Sure.
And I think Bob would be here tonight, but they have a school board meeting right now.
There we go. Absolutely.
Perfect.
All right. Thank you. All right. Old business. The reconsideration of, of the July 21st, 2025 decision to build the class six road has been withdrawn. Next, uh, receive a status update on a number of applicants from the Leach Library for the alternate position.
Yes. So as you may remember, the Leach Library trustee alternate application period ended on August 29th. By the close of that application period, the town has, had received 12 applications for the three vacancies. Based on the quantity of applications received, which you'll be sending out to you tomorrow, we are recommending the town council takes one of the three following courses of action. One would be to interview all 12 applicants split between the September 15th and October 6th council meetings. Two would be interview all 12 applicants at a special meeting before October 6th. Or three, choose a set number of applicants to interview, starting suggestion six at the October 6th meeting beginning at 6:00 PM. If you select option three, we suggest that over the next two weeks, the council, each counselor makes a list of the four individuals that they would like most to interview and then decide on a final list of candidates at the September 15th meeting to then interview on October 6th. And on this, we only need the direction of the chair based on consensus.
Questions?
Three.
You like three?
Yeah.
Sean likes option three. Anyone else?
I'm watching option three.
Option three is that you choose the number of applicants to interview, suggestion six at the October 6th meeting. So basically we review the applications beforehand and we pick six people to talk to publicly.
I go with option two because I, I feel, I feel that if they put their name in, they're interested. They should have an opportunity to come in, speak, tell us why and move forward that way.
Then I, may I suggest option one then if that's what you want to do? Because option one would just puts it over the two meetings as opposed to having a special meeting.
Yeah, as long as we, as long as we interview all 12 applicants.
I just think you might have a hard time, might be hard for her to coordinate people who can make it this meeting. I can't make that meeting. The, I don't know. I, I just think one special meeting, get it in, get it done and be done with it publicly.
I would think if they could make the October 6th meeting for the special meeting, then they could make the October 6th town council meeting, right? At the same date, so.
My suggestion was a meeting just.
It gives them more flexibility actually if you have two potential dates than if you had one.
Yeah, I, I would go with option one.
I just worry about forgetting and then, I don't know.
If, if you want to interview everybody, I'd say option one because that gets everybody a chance. And then we can split it six and six over the two meetings.
Yeah, I think option one works.
What do you think, Tim? Where are you seeing these options?
Um, I have it here.
Lose a piece of paper.
Oh, do you have it? Yeah.
Ted, that's the piece of pa-, there was a piece of paper sitting next to you when you came in.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
That would be why. Thank you.
This wasn't able to make it into your packet because again, the application period closed Friday and then it's the next fourth day.
My, my other question is, Kirsten, aren't we going to get some input from the trustees, board of trustees?
Once you figure this out, that's where the next part comes in.
Okay.
Keep reading.
Tackle one thing at a time here.
Okay.
It's what happens when I'm entering into the meeting. You get punchy, Kirsten.
I, I say go with number one.
I'm fine with number one.
I'm fine. I, I prefer number two, but I just want to get it all over with a band-aid.
One?
Sorry, you go with?
I'm just, I would say number one is fine and then, uh, we would make our decisions on the six. Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
And, um, Mr. Chair, are you comfortable if it breaks down? Like, I know I'll, I'll strive to get as close to six and six as possible. Are you comfortable for breaks down like five and seven type of thing?
Yes.
And then on that note as well, would you like to start the October 6th meeting at 6:00 PM in order to get through the rest of the interviews and the deliberations slightly earlier to not cut into your meeting time?
Yes.
Other things?
I'm fine with it. Is the rest of the council, can they all, can you all make it at six?
I thought we had a meeting at one of our meetings with.
That's the 15th, which is why I'm suggesting that the sixth.
You have a meeting of legal counsel, reference one of the agenda items you have for the 15th.
Thank you. I just want to make sure that 6:00 PM on the sixth wasn't interfering. Thank you.
So it would be at 6:00 PM on the 15th and 6:00 PM on the 16th.
But is everybody able to make it on the 6th of October at 6:00 PM?
Yes, I can.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. So just to state clearly, we're going to proceed with option one. You're going to interview all 12 applicants split between the next two regularly scheduled council meetings on September 15th and October 6th. You're going to meet at 6:00 PM on October 6th as well as September 15th and I'm going to try and split them as evenly as possible.
Yes.
All right. Love it.
Thank you.
Um, that brings us to the next point right here. At the August 4th council meeting, the council gave me consensus to move forward with the plan that included soliciting feedback on the applicants from the Leach Library trustees. As a reminder, the RSA does allow the Leach Library trustees to recommend who they would like you to put forward as the alternates. However, based on the motion made and the vote that occurred on the July 21st meeting, it somewhat made you unable to do that without a subsequent vote.
Well, that was one of the options and you, you chose not to take that option. So that's why I wanted some specificity before we sent these out and you didn't want us to actually do that.
Yeah. So therefore if the council would like the Leach Library trustees to submit the boards, to submit their board's recommendation and to clarify it is the recommendation of the full board, not of individuals on the board. As to who should be appointed, the council must make and vote upon the motion that I have below.
So I have one item to add here. It looks like our September 15th meeting is quite lengthy. Would we be able to just move all the interviews to the sixth instead?
That's what I said.
That was one of the options.
Well, it didn't really seem like it was written that way. It said on or before, it said before October 6th.
You can do it on the sixth. There's no reason you can't.
And number two said before the sixth.
I'm fine either way.
Counselor Combs, the only reason that I say the 15th or the sixth is just to let, in case anybody can't make the sixth. I can certainly try and wait that.
Right. I'm just worried that the 15th could be, well, at least thankfully now we have our interviews at the beginning of the meeting, but.
And we do have an extra hour on that, so. I think it gives the most flexibility to the applicants to have it on both days.
No, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure that we weren't overwhelming a meeting for you guys.
Anything else you need from us?
I just need if you would like, I need you to decide if you would like the Leach Library trustees to weigh in and give formal feedback.
I think Ted's motion said we were going to do what I said. I think Ted's motion said we were gonna do it ourselves, correct?
Right.
So Ted's motion said that we were gonna do it ourselves.
Okay.
I think that that was the point of this. If we changed our mind, if we wanted to, we had the option to get the recommendations, but we'd have to, because of the motion was specified that way, we'd have to specify in a motion to ask for the recommendations. That's what...
Exactly.
I'll leave it up to you. I'm fine with Ted's motion, but whatever.
They basically said they couldn't decide, they needed us, so I'm fine.
All right.
All right.
We're good?
Yep.
Thank you.
Fantastic, thank you very much.
All right, next up, approval of the consent items. I will accept the motion to accept the consent items.
Second.
Motion from Sean, second from Ted. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes in the affirmative. Next up, any liaison reports?
None this evening, Mr. Chair.
We have school board tonight, they're doing a preliminary discussion on full-day kindergarten that will be, I believe the plan is to actually incorporate it within the elementary schools. And then, on September 23rd, the board will actually be going to, speaking more fully on that, and I guess we'll be making a decision to either fold it into the budget or not.
Okay.
So I think that's an interesting piece for them to be looking at at this time.
Go ahead, Dan.
And I had CIP. We have one more meeting left. We talked about the school district office and Dave Wally's DPW plans. There were a few little changes, but for our last meeting, it will be the last Monday in September, and we are opening up to the public where we will review every single item that was in the CIP, and the public will be able to speak after each one and give us input. So we are looking for the public to come, talk to us at 6 o'clock, 6:30, excuse me, on the last Monday of the month, to come to that meeting right here and give their input on these projects that they will potentially be being put on the warrant or paying for.
Excellent. Nothing, Dan?
Nothing, Dan.
Tom Miners' report.
So actually, you've got the written report that I've given you on a weekly basis, so I actually don't have anything to add, and just like to go through the agenda for the next two meetings if I could.
Absolutely.
All right, so the 15th, we have the public hearing to repeal Title V, Title VI, rather, of the municipal code, we talked about that, that's the policy pieces, so that they're actually gonna remain as policies and come out of the code. And then the Leach Library Board of Trustees alternate interviews. Discuss request to rescind the preservation easement for the house located at Tulichfield Road. Open gov presentation, that's for the asset management program and the permitting program. Receive update regarding the revaluation of properties from the assessing department. Discuss a set of public hearing for October 6th regarding the revision of elderly exemption requirements. Receive the fourth quarter budget report, the unaudited version of FY 2025, it'll be a while before we get the audit back. Discuss request brought by resident and sponsored by Councillor Paul to consider opening an additional polling places, additional polling place for elections. Discuss request by Councillor Paul to implement a policy on how citizen volunteers of the year are chosen, and discuss request by Councillor Paul to consider creating pocket parts, parks. You might want to think about whether or not we want to try to absorb all that in that one night, or we want to move some of those items. Chair, that's up to you to consider there.
You can move my pocket parks if you want.
Okay.
That can happen anytime. I do want to talk about it, but we can do it anytime.
So you want me to move that to...
Yeah, move that to the...
Okay.
Thank you.
You know, the other two things are kind of too sensitive, but they have to get talked about, I guess, because of election and...
Yeah.
On October 6th, public hearing, revision of elderly exemption requirements. Also, the next item is present, discuss, set a public hearing on proposed charter amendments, adjusting the charter taxonomy, eliminating Article 10, outdated, it's the transition when you had a different form of government. The next item is discuss, review, and approve traffic management policy, hopefully it's ready for you by then, Traffic Safety Committee is gonna be reviewing that. Town manager will present the options for changing the authority of the Budget Committee, you've already seen a draft of that, it's been sent to legal counsel for review. Once that's done, we'll send it to the school board, as we talked about in the original motion, as well as the Budget Committee. And town manager will present the 90-day status report to the town council. The other thing too is I needed to, we need to have a non-meeting regarding negotiations on contract strategy. I was gonna do it in those nights, but you're gonna be awful busy. Is there a willingness to do that tonight instead? Or do you want to try to fit it in there, because you've got a pretty hefty agenda now for those next two meetings?
I'm fine, but I don't want to speak for the rest of you.
Quarter of nine.
I'm fine. It's an early night. Okay. The answer's yes.
Okay, so we'll do that right after this, and there's that, that's your agendas for the next couple of meetings.
Thank you, sir. I'll open public comment.
I'd like to clear up a few things about the somewhat inaccurate things that were talked about regarding our town manager testifying at hearings. I have been to many hearings where town managers have spoken for their towns. I can think of many times that it would have been appropriate, especially in the municipal committee for them. And as far as things changing from minute to minute, we're talking about hearings, we're not talking about them coming and voting. If a budget, if a bill is put forward, that is the bill that the hearing is on. So that is the bill that the town manager would be addressing. He has done it in the past, and other towns have him there all the time. As far as Sean, you may know, think you know everything that goes on at the State House, but you do not. And you have gone up to testify as a town councillor, you have too, and so did Councillor Farrell. Did you get permission from everybody else in the board to go and do that? And that was about a bill that affected every single town in the state, correct? Not just Londonderry. And you, Representative Faber, have used your position as a town councillor to push bills publicly at the State House, and were never reprimanded by it, and you should have been. We need somebody to come and speak for it. One of the things that would have been appropriate to have a town manager is the business about perhaps opening up a second polling place for the federal elections. That's directly affected Londonderry more than any other town in the state. That would have been a bill to have a position on and have your town manager come up and talk. So to think that it is not appropriate, and things don't change minute to minute, Ron, in a public hearing, the public hearing is on the bill, correct?
Correct, but the bills do change, Christine, you know they do.
They do, okay. So you are taking, you need to take advantage, for example, having a town manager at the hearings for the finance would be huge. I'll give you an example. Finance took away us getting the registration for all those rental cars, is that correct?
See, I'm sorry, I was...
The town, the finance committee took away our ability to have our cars registered and us get the money for them here in town, correct?
I think what you mean is the legislature passed a bill that took the fleets away from municipalities.
Took the fleets away. That affects us huge. We got huge amounts of money, huge, from all those rental cars. That's something that a town manager could have gone and spoken to because it took money out of our pockets. So you think you know everything, those of you, I'm not talking to you, who have not been to Concord, and don't say that you have other, you do have other councillors in town, you do, you do, you have other reps in town. But do they get back to the town manager? Do they get back to us? Do they put in bills?
Yes.
No, no.
Thank you, Christine.
I will say, the magic words, "I'm a citizen," don't absolve you and change you, not into a state rep. Everyone knows you're a state rep when you speak at the library, everyone knows you're a state rep when you speak elsewhere. So it doesn't matter what...
Sean, are you talking to me while I'm still up here, or are you talking to me after I turn away?
This is public comment, please.
I don't deserve that.
I'm just responding to what you said.
That's inappropriate. But when you say, "I am representing, I am here as town councillor," Sean Faber, you are representing this town.
No, I'm representing me.
Not when you say, "I am here as a town councillor." You did that for the suicide bill, and the state had to come down on you about it.
That never happened.
Okay, Richard Belinski, Eynhall Road, two things. The alternate thing for the library, you're probably all aware, I'm one of the alternate I don't understand why these dates are getting moved around. We had an application we needed to fill out, it needed to be done by the 29th. It said if you're gonna be interviewed, you will know by September 9th. It said, please clear your calendar for the 22nd of September between 6 and 9. Then apparently it went to the 15th. Now we're at, what, October 6th, is it?
Yeah, and I cannot...
Absolutely, I can actually...
Yes, so the original, the original council meeting schedule for September was the 8th and the 22nd.
Yep.
And the meetings ended up shifting back to the 1 and 3 weeks, so there is no longer a meeting on the 22nd, so that's why we needed to discuss it today, and that's part of the reason.
Okay, but now we're out to October, and you could have just had a special meeting on the 22nd, done this and been done with it. It's kind of a situation where you're causing some of the problems that are being done at the library. It's not making you look much better than them. I'm not blaming anybody, I'm just saying it is what it is. All right? That's what I've been trying to avoid, that's why I fought so hard and got the cameras put in there, so people could watch the meetings of what went on at the library, because they didn't want cameras. Second thing, Murray Salvage Yard. First of all, I want to make it clear to people, before anybody picks up on this and tries to make an issue, I live within a half mile of that. I've been, you know, against that Salvage Yard for 25 years. I'm glad you're gonna look into it. But a few of you seem a little concerned about why they didn't buy the whole Salvage Yard. So I guess what you're getting at, if they're gonna buy a piece of land, then they should buy the whole piece of land. But that's not how it works. I think you all know Al Baldozaro. He lived next door on the other side of the bridge. I don't remember the exact acreage of his property, but say it was 10 acres. The state didn't buy his whole property, they come in and only bought the low land, the wetland, for mitigation. They didn't buy his house, he still owns the house to this day, and he lives in Florida. So they don't always buy a whole piece of land, all right? It's the same thing they did with the Salvage Yard. Are you people aware that they did buy part of the Salvage Yard? Again, I don't remember the exact acreage of it. I think they bought maybe 14 acres and left the six, because the six is high and dry. They're buying wetlands for mitigation when they've disturbed wetlands in whatever the project is. So there's no benefit to them buying high and dry land, unless they're gonna take the high and dry land and turn it into wetlands, which they can do, and there's a ratio, and I don't remember what it is, if you disturb one acre, you have to mitigate it with two acres or three acres. Do you know what that is, Sean?
Yeah, it's higher than that, I don't know if it's...
Whatever it is, I don't remember the exact thing. So keep that in mind, instead of, you know, there's a lot of talk here tonight, well, why didn't they buy the whole thing? Well, they didn't buy Al's whole thing either, and he's right next door. That has nothing to do with it. And they will never try to put somebody out of their house if they can, you know, avoid it. I know they didn't derry with the foray, and they're not gonna try to put a business out of business. So get that out of your heads, because that's what happened there, you can look it up on the town records. Second thing to keep in consideration is, there's a lot of talk in this town about water, putting in water lines and all that, and I 100% agree, don't have a problem with that. But this board should be doing their best to buy something like this, because to the best I'm acknowledged, that is on the largest aquifer in the town of Londonderry. And if you don't want to buy something that can help save the largest aquifer in town, then why are we bothering with water? Because it kind of says, well, we don't really care. I know you gotta be careful with it, and I don't blame you, but all those testing wells, all the programs, those that monitor that, is all transferable to the town. So it's already in place. So I appreciate that you're going forward with it, but let's get off the fact, why didn't they buy the whole thing? Because that's irrelevant. Look at Al's property right next door, they could have bought his house and everything, they didn't. It's how they do it. If they don't have to take a business or a home away, they won't. They will if they have to. So look at it, you can go to the town records and see how much they bought. They bought a lot more of the Salvage Yard property than is left. I think it might have been 14 acres they took.
Thank you. Anybody else have some public comment?
I want to address Richard's comments, please.
Okay, go ahead.
Richard, I just want to confirm what you said about how the state buys land, because I have property that the state wanted to take, X amount, and I said, well, that's gonna impact, you know, four homes. And they're like, oh, no, it's not.